Good morning, everyone, and welcome to JA's Recipe for Success. I'm your host, Lori Salerulo, and I'm the President and CEO of Junior Achievement of South Florida. So you know, every week, Thursday mornings, live on LinkedIn, Facebook, YouTube, we bring you entrepreneurs, leaders in our community, business people, activists, all kinds of different people to talk about the recipe to their success, right? And all the ingredients that go into creating a great future. And two of the reasons we do this is number one, first of all, I love learning about all these people. And they inspire me and they motivate me to be better. And then, of course, we do it for our students. So Junior Achievement, as you may know, serves over 54,000 students a year. All of our high school students have the opportunity to view our Recipe for Success episodes. In fact, the link goes out to them as soon as the show is over. So we want to bring these great people to them and have them know that they can be the next leaders of our community. So today's host, I am so thrilled. You know, we're still in Financial Literacy Month, so it was really important to find a guest this week that had a passion for financial literacy. And this woman absolutely does. And so our next guest is one of our Broward County Public School Board members. She is in District Six of Broward County Schools. She was elected three times. Now, I don't know, the thought of being elected once scares me, but she's done it three times. So she's a hero to me. Running the largest district, a fifth, sixth largest district in the country, largest employer in Broward County, massive company that she's running. So help me welcome Lori Rich Levinson. Good morning.
Good morning, Lori. So happy to be with you this morning to talk about one of my favorite topics, financial literacy.
I know, I know. And look, we're both in our real kitchens. I see your kitchen behind you there. Talking about ingredients and recipes. Do you cook much, by the way?
Um, I cook as much as I can. I like to cook, so yes, I do. I'd say three to four nights a week.
Oh, that's not bad. Yeah, that's really good. You know, at the beginning of COVID, I was cooking so much. And then I think I just got burned out on it. But when I was cooking a lot, I actually lost weight. So it really is better to cook from scratch. So, but I love cooking for holidays and guests and trying new recipes.
My favorite also, yes.
Yeah. So I mentioned in the introduction that April is National Financial Literacy Month. And obviously, you know, it's also near and dear to my heart because it's one of JA's core three pillars. And Junior Achievement and Broward County Schools, for those that don't know, have been longtime partners, way before the building was ever built. But over the last 12 years, we've been able to serve, right? Every fifth and every eighth grader, and then, of course, growing each year with our high school students. But I would love to know and have our audience know, what was it that got you interested in financial literacy? Why do you have such a passion about it?
I'm really so passionate about it because my background is in economics. And I've been a business person for over 30 years in the business field. I come from a family that's been involved in business for generations. In fact, my grandfather, the reason I'm so passionate about Junior Achievement is my grandfather was President of Junior Achievement in Miami-Dade County years and years ago. And I remember when I was younger, he used to have students come to his business and work. So he had internships way back then.
Wow, internships were popular.
I'm talking about 40 years ago. He had young people come and volunteer and internships for people in his business. And I would say that was probably my first exposure, especially to Junior Achievement. And then, like I said, I studied economics. I've been in business. I've owned my own business. And to me, the things that I'd like to impart to our children and give them the opportunities to learn about are things that will affect them for life. And so financial literacy is one of those areas where you're going to use the rest of your life. And so to me, it's one of the most important areas we can teach children about. And I think it's been lacking from our schools for many years. We were not educated on financial literacy growing up. And I think it makes so much of the financial decisions that they have to make in life easier and makes them more knowledgeable about them.
Yeah. And you know, it's funny, we think they're not listening when we're teaching them all this, whether it's at home or in schools. But I've talked to so many of our students during this pandemic, right? Who have gotten jobs and all that and want to ask them about, you know, what do you do with your paycheck? And how are you handling the money? And all of those things, you know, they really do remember, right? And they may not remember every little thing, but they do remember many of the basics. And if they can just start with that foundation, I think they'll be so much more empowered in the future, right, to be successful financially.
They absolutely do. And for those that hear about the courses that we do offer, and we'll get into those, but we offer high school level courses along with joining with our partners like you to bring that to our students. Every student you talk to who has either taken financial literacy or is hearing about it for the first time is anxious that they have that opportunity and that that's available to them.
Yeah. You know, it's funny, I don't think years ago that kids cared so much about taking courses in this. But I actually do hear a lot of high school students now say, I need to know how to handle, I don't know how to take care of my money.
Right. You hear them, and then when their parents find out, they say, I wish I had a class like that in high school. There is not one adult that I speak to who doesn't make that remark to me when they hear about financial literacy classes.
Lori, there isn't one adult that comes to JA World that doesn't say to me, why don't you do this for adults? We all need this, right?
Exactly.
And so we've often thought about doing an event for adults, right? And making it fun and having them do a budget or something. And so, you know, I often do brag in the community about the partnership and the vision, right, that Broward County Public Schools had 12 years ago when we agreed that it was going to be required in fifth grade and in eighth grade. And now, you know, and I know that Broward County Public Schools has an elective in financial literacy in high school. All right, am I, am I right about that?
We actually have three classes in high school. Two of them, I actually fought with the state to get it approved by the state because for a very long time, they were saying that it was embedded in the mandatory economics classes that our students take their senior year. And it turns out that some of those standards are embedded in there, but the vast majority are not. And so I really felt that a standalone course needed to be created. And so about five years ago, we finally, maybe four years ago, we finally were able to get approval. And I worked with our staff and they developed a regular and an honors financial literacy course. And it is called Money Matters. We do not call it financial literacy because upon speaking to many of our students, they thought it was a reading class. And so we renamed it Money Matters so they would understand what the class would be about. And the enrollment has really increased since then. And I really look forward to making it a mandatory class at some point that our students have to take. It's a half-year course. And it focuses on all kinds of financial decision-making. So it takes them through accounts, various accounts, investments, savings, checking, takes them through credit and about revolving credit and what happens and to teach them how that works. It teaches them about a fixed or variable rate mortgage when you're buying a house, whether you buy or lease a car. You know, many of the concepts that JA World reinforces with our students when they get to come to JA World and go to the storefront there and devise budgets and work that way. That feeds right into the type of course that we're offering in the high school. Also about insurance, basically, just about every financial decision they would have to make. And there's a regular level course, like I mentioned, and there's an honors level course. And then we also have our financial algebra course, which is, you know, based more on applying upper-level mathematics standards to financial literacy. So those are the three classes that we do have available at the high school level for our students.
Yeah. And you're right, because Finance Park, you know, BizTown is really a foundation. You know, they do all do their 20 lessons in the classroom before they ever come for simulation. I love when people say, oh, my son or daughter went on the field trip. No, it's not a field trip, right? They can't just come to JA World and know what to do. It's all those 20 lessons in the classroom that are extremely interactive. They're not just learning from a book, but they're actually interviewing for the jobs. They're learning about everything you just talked about, those budget line items, because they're going to come to JA World and have a profile, an adult profile in Finance Park and have to live it out, right? And understand how to make those decisions for themselves. And so it's a very eye-opening experience for them. And we hear some crazy comments, for sure.
Right. And I think, I think it's a real building block for us, for the high school level, that we're able to do this in eighth grade, you know, with our students. And also, these classes are interactive. I've been to visit many of them where they'll get a local car dealership to come in and talk to them about whether they should buy or lease a car and what you need to look at in order to make that decision. So there's that real-life framework that you do at JA World every day that's incorporated into these classes as well.
Awesome. You know, you mentioned about making it mandated, right? A mandated course. So 20, I'm sure you know, this 21 states in our country have required financial literacy courses in the core curriculum, right? And I hear so often, Lori, parents say, this is just as important as math and reading and history and all those things. What would it take for that to happen, right? I know you're a proponent of it.
Well, we, we are going to have that discussion this year. I brought it up last year and the year before. And I will be again discussing it. And I believe it was discussed, it was supposed to be discussed in the committee that works on our student progression plan this year so that they could come back to us with input. And we will be having that discussion this year about making that a mandatory half-credit course. And I hope that that's going to be something that my colleagues find as valuable. I know that all of my colleagues have supported financial literacy and what it does for our students and the lifelong preparation that it gives them.
Yeah. No, you're all so supportive of this. And anything that I can do to make that happen? Because I hear it day in and day out from parents, how important this is, right? And that these life skills have to be a part of it. So thank you for your support on this and for your passion around it. So it's always been a pleasure to do this with you. And now I want to shift a little bit. I want to talk about Lori. Because, you know, so often I think people see our elected officials at the dais and they really don't know who they are as people, as leaders, right? And so I love the show because I get to expose that, right? And who you are and why. And so I guess my first natural question is, what made you run for school board the first time? And then what made you do it, you know, three, two more times?
Right. Well, I, I really, my passion is education. It has always been and will always be. Because to me, that's the most important thing you can do for our children and for future generations is to educate them. It opens up the world for them. It gives them opportunities that they might never have had without education. And so to me, it's the real game changer. And it gives everyone in this country an opportunity to succeed when you get a high-quality education. So really, that's to me what it's all about. And I'm very focused on what we are able to give our kids in the form of education. I'm laser-focused on that, on academic outcomes and making sure that we are giving every student across the district. And even though I'm elected from one district, I'm passionate and known to be supportive of children throughout the district. Because again, to me, it's about bringing those lifelong learning opportunities to them like financial literacy. As you know, I've also been very involved in the creation and implementation of our debate initiative, which is the largest in the United States. We have over 15,000 students. And again, that's a lifelong skill that you need when you leave. And so that's what really has gotten me involved. And that's what pushes me every day to make sure that those opportunities are there for all of our children.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think you can separate one district from the other. If you're going to make decisions for children, right? We have to look at the whole county. It might, sometimes there might be a program that benefits certain areas or certain schools. But as a whole, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, you talked about laser focus and passion. And I think especially these days, we talked very briefly before about politics in general and how often it sometimes gets in the way of doing this real work that you talk about. And so when you run for office and then you're in these offices, it takes courage, right? I can't look at any of you and not say, my gosh, these are courageous people because you put yourself out there on the line when you run for office, right? So talk about what gets you through that, right? When you make a decision like that, you know there are going to be haters. You know there are going to be doubters. You know there are going to be people who are going to try to take you down, right? I hate to say it, but that's just the world of politics. That passion, is it the passion that has driven you through it? But what other skills really made you continue to push through that and continues to make you push through it?
I would say that really getting to the end result of being able to do this for students. And yes, sometimes it's very hard personally. And you just have to push through it, you know? Like we teach our kids resilience and perseverance. We have to model those characteristics for our students. And although it's, sometimes it's not easy and you do take personal shots and things coming at you, you have to always keep in mind, and I'm always reminding myself about why I do what I do and that there's a greater good at the end. And it outweighs any of the other challenges that you may need to go through.
Yeah. You know, one of the things, you're right. Somebody had, I think it was Sheriff Tony, actually, who was on the show recently. And I asked him similar question. We talked about doubters and haters and, right? Because he's another one who's getting shots, always taking at him. And he said, I try to embrace the haters and the doubters, right? Because if you try to fight them, you know, you're just going to get, I think, very, very frustrated, probably, and angry. So I love that approach, just to keep pushing through it. You know, you, you have eight other board members, right? And so when you have eight people at the table, one of the things you see sometimes, right, are people that are not driven by that same passion and that end result that you are. Now, I don't know that we have anybody who isn't driven towards that end result on our school board. But talk a little bit about collaboration, right? Because you're practicing that as a board of nine people all the time and how that plays into the success of you personally, as well as as a district.
Right. Well, I would say that I've been very fortunate to have a group of women. And I do say women because we are a board of all women. And when I first got on the board, we had one man on the board for two years. But since that, we have been a board of all women. And it's really important to collaborate. And I really think that the women that I work with are passionate about bringing the best that we can to our students. And so that makes our job easier amongst ourselves many times. I'm not going to say that there aren't challenges because, of course, there are challenges. But I think we really are focused on student outcomes and what we can do to make the educational experience better, more engaging, interactive, innovative for our students. And as long as we keep our eye on the ball and keep focused on that and collaborate together, there are great things that can happen. And we've seen that happen over the years for our students.
Yeah. I mean, listen, obviously, nine people, people have different passions, particular passions and particular opinions and feelings. So they're always, they're always open for debate, which I love. And I think that we also need to show our children, right? That you can have healthy debate. It's okay to disagree. And we can be tolerant about it, you know?
And that, to me, is why our debate initiative is so important too. Because we have to teach our students that that is healthy, that that is good. That's how you come to a powerful, good decision that is good for everyone. You take a little bit of what people say, pieces of what they say, you put it together and you come up with a product that's great for our kids. And unfortunately, I think that's broken down at the federal and the state level in so many of our states. And so, you know, we're proud to continue to teach our students about speech and debate, how to critically look at a topic and how to do research, organize their thoughts and how to talk, just like you said, and come to the best decision that you can make together. And as a nation, I think they need to look at our kids and watch how they do it.
Yeah, exactly. That they can set the example. Because certainly, we're not seeing those examples, I don't think, these days coming out of our, like you said, federal and state government. But, and that's unfortunate because they are role models and our kids are watching them, right? You know, the other thing that I think is really important, and obviously JA is a perfect example, is, you know, the school district obviously is focused, right? Your core focus is academics, right? You want to prepare these children with the academics they need to be successful to go on to college or certifications or whatever that might look like for them. And I know for a long time, I hear this all the time, the two things. One is, you know, partnerships like Junior Achievement, and I know there are many, many others. How important is that, right, to the success of what you do? I know we can't do what we do alone, right? Talk about that a little bit.
You know, from our friendship, that is, again, one of my big, big passions is partnering. We absolutely cannot do it alone. And organizations such as Junior Achievement are invaluable to our organization because you can bring resources to us that may not be available to us otherwise. And you're focused on specific areas where you can bring additional expertise to what we're doing in the classroom. And so it's always been important to me, and I had mentioned it just before, about bringing innovative, interactive, engaging curriculum to our students. Our students aren't interested in just learning from textbooks. That is not the way that our students learn the best. And we know that. You know that. You base what you do on that. And that's why JA, with BizTown and Finance Park, years ago, opening those up, was really ahead of the game.
Yeah. We're working, we're working on a new vision, but I can't tell you about it yet. I'm going to let that simmer for a minute. We're going to go to a quick break and show a short little video.
Okay, thank you.
Please welcome tonight's presentation of What I Want to Do.
When I Grow Up.
When I Grow Up.
I don't want to live paycheck to paycheck.
I don't want to cry when paying the bills.
When I Grow Up.
I don't want to be turned down for a business loan.
I don't want to borrow a lot for an education.
And then not know what to do with it.
When I Grow Up.
I don't want to be paid less.
Told I'm underqualified.
Or overqualified.
When I Grow Up.
When I Grow Up.
I want to know how to save for my future.
Find a job I like.
And start my own business.
When I Grow Up.
I want to know how to provide for my family.
And invest in my community and make a difference.
When I Grow Up.
When I Grow Up.
When I Grow Up.
When I Grow Up.
I just want things to be different.
At Junior Achievement, we promote economic empowerment through education, but we can't do it alone.
You know, no matter how many times I watch that video, I get the chills, right? I mean, that is why we do what we do.
That is why. When I Grow Up. That is why.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, we talked about partnerships. I want to go back for a second. You talked about your grandfather and how he would bring interns into his business. And, you know, the other core focus, well, there are three at JA, right? Financial literacy, of course, being highlighted this month, which we run through every single program that we do. So, but the other core focus, two core focuses are the workforce skills as well as entrepreneurship. And I love when you talk about debate. And I've been to your events with the debate. I'm so often reminded, and I know I'm sending you information today about being a shark at the entrepreneurship program. But when I think about this, you know, look, all of our debate kids may not go on to be lawyers. All of our entrepreneurship students may not go on to start businesses. But to create that mindset, right? That entrepreneurial mindset, to give them the opportunity to build a company or build an argument, right, around something and develop those skills that it takes, collaboration, communication, problem-solving, critical thinking. I hear kids all the time when they go through programs like this about how that actually changed their lives, right? They sat in classrooms, as you said, but these are the programs where they're walking out going, wow, now I feel like I understand why I was in the classroom, right? And so, and I applaud you for supporting these programs. But you talked about your grandfather, and it sounds like he was an entrepreneur.
Yes, he was an entrepreneur in South Florida. For many, many years, he had his business and flooring business in South Florida that many know about and many know him from the years there. And he was always involved with the business community, with the philanthrop, with philanthropy and service. And was just an incredible role model for me. But I was in business at a very young age, at his business, at my father and mother's business. And it's just been a part of me. So entrepreneurship is something that I'm truly passionate about too. And you're 100% right about what it teaches our students and all the skills that they use in order to be entrepreneurs. And so to me, giving them those opportunities like you and others do, just invaluable for our students. And we know these are the things they take away from their education, the things that they remember forever and the skills that they're going to use for a lifetime. So that's why these partnerships and this interactive piece is so important to educating our students.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think when you talk about your parents, I just talked to your mom, actually, a couple of days ago. And I always love visiting with her too. And you talked about your grandfather and your parents being entrepreneurs. You know, and growing up, I think you're so fortunate to have had those kinds of role models, right? And so tell me, you know, give me one lesson that you think you learned from that, from watching them and that encouraged you to go into business and economics.
I just think the idea of working with others on a daily basis that way, coming in for people to be able to purchase what they need, the customer service element, the interaction, was just exciting for me to see. And so to be able to do that, like I said, I come from a family of business people. And just being exposed to it, the excitement and how it all works from a young age, the operations piece. I know not everyone gets excited about the operational piece, but I actually love the operational piece. And that was a draw for me to the school board as well. With my business background, we do have over a $4 billion budget. And to ensure that we're looking at that money and spending it as effectively and efficiently as we can so that the money goes back into our classrooms for our students and teachers.
Yeah, that's so true. It's kind of like figuring out operations to me is kind of like the, you know, the wheels and the cogs and the everything that makes it work behind the scenes. And so, yeah, you and I have that in common, that and the financial stuff.
And that's the piece they truly have to understand. Because for a business to be effective, it's not just the parts facing out to people, the sales piece. You have to make sure you understand the operational piece, so to be effective.
Absolutely. You know, I think that we talked about so many ingredients to your success. And I think, you know, and I'll read just a couple of them stand out to me for sure. And that's your passion. And that's your passion, Lori. I mean, you and I have such passionate, intense conversations and I always walk away, right? Learning or appreciating another perspective. We may not always agree, as you said, it's okay for people to have differences of opinion, but, but I always walk away respecting your passion around an issue or, or a situation. So thank you.
And likewise.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, you talked about focus, laser focus, right? That you talked about staying focused on, on where you're going. And also the importance of education and how it's a game changer for so many, including yourself and your own children, right? Getting to the end result, you're a results driven leader, no doubt. And I'm, it's really interesting because I am as well, being in finance, I think, right? We focus on the bottom line. And it's really been interesting because when I started out in business and probably you too, everything was results driven, right? Now everything is people focused. Yes, we're focused on the bottom line, but we may need to make sure that the people and processes, right? So there's a very big focus on that and I know that you've done that as well.
Yeah, in order to be successful in business, you must focus on the people. They're the key ingredient. And so for a business to be successful, you have to make sure that your people are happy and want to be working and producing there.
Exactly, absolutely. So it's a big focus of ours at JA too. You talked about pushing through resilience. Oh boy, if there was ever a time we needed to, to have resilience and you talked about perseverance, gosh, I can't think of a time in my lifetime, right? That we needed it more. Collaboration, right? And creativity, innovation. You mentioned all of those things that it takes and bringing the best, bringing your best forward, right? And I, I love that. Relationships and partnerships and how important they are, having role models, being a role model, working with others to get to the best option, the best possibility for our young people or for whoever at that time, right? And then making sure that you're looking at the details and figuring out how it all works and comes together. And so those are absolutely some amazing ingredients and certainly have gotten you through these 12 years, almost 12 years, right? That you've served. Will you run for office again?
I have not decided yet what I'm going to be doing, so.
I didn't plan to ask you that, but then when I just asked, I was like, wow, I wonder if she'll run again. Well, I, I thank you for your service. And by the way, you know, nobody goes into these jobs unless they are there to serve others, right? And so obviously that is another one of your ingredients, right? Because nobody would take the bullets and the shots that we take in politics and in these positions if they weren't truly passionate, right? And serving, wanting to serve others.
But when they see, when you see the end result, that kind of dissipates somewhat. It's hard to explain, but when you see what these kids are able to do and what you can bring to them, just puts a real smile on your face.
Oh yeah, listen, I can tell you, no matter how bad of a day I might be having, which I don't really have bad days, but no matter how frustrating or challenging or whatever's going on, I'll go walk through Biz Town or Finance Park and you can't help but have a smile on your face when you feel the energy of these young people learning and creating, right? And, and just.
Absolutely.
It gives you hope, right? The future.
It does. I'm actually on my way out to a school when I finish with you and those, that's my favorite thing to do is visit and see what's happening in those classrooms with our students and, and awesome teachers.
Exactly. So my last question always on our show is, what is your main ingredient to success?
Well, you, I didn't realize I used a lot of those words that actually could be, they all should be on the recipe card.
Okay.
The old fashioned recipe card.
One main ingredient, right? I'm Italian, so tomatoes, right? And olive oil are a main ingredient for us.
Right. And my main ingredient, probably you can tell from how I've been speaking and what I've been speaking about is passion. It all starts with passion. All those ingredients go in to make it a success, but you have to have passion for what you're doing to begin with because that's where you get the best results and the best commitment from people in general when you're passionate about it.
Yeah, my daughter often say to me, Mom, you work so hard, you work so many hours. And I said, you know what, honey? I, I don't feel like I'm working because I am truly passionate about what I do, right? And that's when, you know, when we do the workforce skills, like our career bound program that we're doing with the high school students, that's really what it's about, exposing them to all of these industries and careers so that they can find their passion, right? And whatever that is, because you know, as they say, you'll never feel like you worked the day if you find your passion. So I want to say thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, and most of all, thank you for your passion and your friendship. So thanks for being with us today.
Thank you so much, Lori. I've really enjoyed this and this half an hour went by really quickly.
I know, I know. Chris is always texting me like, okay, you got to close it out. And I'm like, no, I want to keep talking. Anyway, but listen, the good news is I get to talk to you often, so we can always continue this conversation. But thank you, Lori, for taking the time to meet with us today.
Thank you for having me. It's been such a pleasure.
Thank you. Bye, everyone. And don't forget to check out this episode on YouTube, LinkedIn, Facebook and past episodes on our website, jsouthflorida.org. See you next time. Let's keep cooking. Bye, Lori.
Bye bye.